Supervisor Smith has encouraged me to go ahead and continue. Item number seven, Human Resources. This is Director Ed Gilliland. This is approval of the memorandum of personnel transaction.
Move it.
We have a motion. All second. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no. And the memorandum of personnel transaction is approved, five to zero. Item eight is Veterans Affairs. Director Danielle Dempster does receive the commission of veteran affairs quarterly report.
I'll move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to receive. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero. Item nine is Rural Economic Development. We do have our director, David Gleiser, here with us. This is to authorize the chairman to sign a release of real estate mortgage for Triple H International LLC and acknowledge project maintenance closeout activities for Midstates Electric Company Incorporated and receive the related closeout activity documents. Director Gleiser?
Yes, thank you. David Gleiser, Rural Economic Development Director. Just to provide some of the members on the board, and as well, this was a project that preceded my time here at the county. But back in 2008, Woodbury County submitted an application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for state assistance to help relocate a business here in rural Woodbury County, which was Midstates Electric Company. The project qualified for the Community Economic Betterment Account Program and the High Quality Job Creation Program from the state, which provided the company with a $40,000 loan and a $40,000 forgivable loan, both on a five-year fixed term with 0% interest. These programs did have requirement for the company to complete the project and create a certain number of jobs within three years and maintain those positions for two years. So 25 full-time equivalent jobs with wages of $14.44 per hour or higher were required for the Community Economic Betterment Account Program and 16 full-time jobs with wages of $17.05 per hour for the High Quality Job Creation Funding Agreement. So in total, the project was to create and maintain 41 jobs. In addition, the state required a 20% local match from local sources as part of the program requirements. To help meet this requirement, Woodbury County provided a $16,000 loan to the company, which we provided at 0% interest over a five-year term, and we secured the loan with a real estate mortgage on their building at their property located at 1658 Highway 20, which is formerly known as the Stockman's Building. Per the agreement with the state, and after receiving two extensions, the project completion date was June 30th of 2014 with a project maintenance date of June 20th, 2016. On August 8th, we received notice from the state that the company had successfully maintained their obligations through the maintenance period. Midstates Electric Company had 31 full-time equivalents make at least $14.44 per hour and 22 full-time equivalents at $17.05 per hour. So in total, 53 jobs were created and maintained, which is 12 more than they were supposed to, and they successfully completed or fulfilled their obligations to the county. So in closing, the closeout actions from the state have taken. They have sent us canceled promissory notes for the loans, and they've mailed copies to the company. We have canceled the promissory note for their loan, and I'm asking for the board to authorize the chairman to sign that promissory note and relinquish their project file as complete.
Move it.
I have a motion and a second, and I think this is one of those things that IEDA does so well, is to make sure that there's not only the initial job creation, but that they maintain those jobs throughout the duration. So very good structure there.
Yeah, 53 good-paying jobs, and you know, they're a nice, quiet company, and it's nice to have them in the county, so.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item B is authorize the chairman to sign a release of real estate mortgage for Ultimate Plaza LLC and acknowledge closeout activities for Ultimate Plaza LLC and receive the related closeout activity documents. David?
So last year, we borrowed, Woodbury County, under our revolving loan fund program, borrowed $60,000 to Ultimate Plaza LLC for the expansion of Ultimate Fitness to construct a new 24-hour fitness facility in a undeveloped parcel in Sargent Bluff. The loan was made through our revolving loan program at a five-year term with a 2% fixed rate, and our $60,000 was 18% of the project's total financing, which was $333,664. In addition to the company's existing three jobs, the project was projected to create additional three to four. Shortly after receiving the loan, the company paid their off, the loan off to Woodbury County in full just this last month. The owners of the business reported having tremendous success at their new and expanded location, and they ended up creating an additional four new jobs, so seven total. We have terminated the UCC filing with the state, and I'm asking for the supervisors to authorize the chairman to release the mortgage and close the project file.
Move it.
All second. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Appreciate your work. Item 10 is our county attorney, PJ Jennings, and this is discussion and action to hire additional support staff for fine collection division within the county attorney's office.
Thank you, supervisors. PJ Jennings, like Chairman Taylor stated, I'll stand up here. And I have along with me, Luanne Hensley, who oversees our fine collection division. Basically, I just wanted to start off by saying, I believe you guys have most of the background material. We give you a whole lot, but we just wanted to give you the figures and then a little bit of kind of what we do, and Luanne's going to talk to you. But basically, what I wanted to say is, when we started this program, a little over two years now, we had indicated that it shouldn't cost the taxpayers any new money, and I believe we've held that end of the bargain. Today, what we're asking for is that additional employee, and we're going to tell you why, but we're also going to be telling you it will not cost the taxpayers of Woodbury County any new money, and I believe we can substantiate that. When we first started this program, it was needed. Everybody across the state was telling Woodbury County, this is something you should do. And so we set out to prove that not only could we do it, but that we could make it beneficial to the county. I believe we've done that. We didn't get any initial funding through the board of supervisors of the county to start this program. We just shifted employees. Some other employees had to take on additional responsibilities, as well as myself, to kind of fill in some of those voids. And then the employees who volunteered to work with me to start this program also took on additional responsibilities. And so it was a burden on a lot of folks, but we knew we could do it, and that's what we did. So I'm going to let Luanne tell you about, a little bit about the program, some of the changes with the laws that have taken place that were implemented July of this year, and then where we're going forward into the future, so.
Hi, I'm Luanne Hensley with the county attorney's office, and not to correct my boss right off the bat, but we've been doing this for about a year and a half. So we started this in March of 2015, and when we first started this, everyone told us, don't expect much in the first couple of years because it takes that long to get this program started. But as you can see from the numbers that PJ gave you, we collected over $552,000 in our first fiscal year, almost $240,000 of which came into the county funds. So I think we exceeded what we had been hoping to do in our first year, and we are continuing to grow as we do this. And I just wanted to remind everybody, too, that these numbers that you have don't reflect our total collection amounts. It doesn't include city fines, which is the bulk of what our driver's license reinstatement program. Those cases are not reflected in these numbers because they're city cases, and that's what everybody refers to as the CAPS program. Victim restitution isn't included in those numbers, the 35% surcharge on every single criminal case that gets assessed, the law enforcement initiative surcharge, and the jail room and board and sheriff's fees. Those are things that we also collect on that don't show on the numbers that you have. And I just wanted, I know you guys keep hearing this, and I just wanted to show you an example of the difference between a city case and a state case.
While Luanne's handing that out, when you pull up those numbers, the fiscal years are correct, but some of the years along the months, for instance, in 2015 fiscal year, I believe we have the wrong year behind the months, but I think it's pretty obvious. We saw the fiscal year, and the months are correct, the amounts are correct, but some of those years that are tagged in those months are incorrect. But we didn't want to waste another tree to just make that correction, so.
So if you look at the first page, the SCNTA case that's highlighted, that's a city case. This is a person that's on a payment plan with us, and he came in and he paid this fine off in full, $397.50. If you look on the next page, the percentage that we get credit for on that collection, even though we do the same amount of work on the city case, is $60. If you look on the following page, the NTA case that's highlighted, that's a state case. Same person on a payment plan with us, we're working with him to get his fines paid off. He comes in and he pays the fine, $397, same amount as the city case. But as you can see on the state case, we get credit for $310 of that. So that's the big difference. Every time we collect on a city case, all we get is the $60 court cost, whereas on the state case, we get a percentage of the fine. So I just wanted you to be able to see the big difference between a city case and a state case as far as what our collections are.
You want to negotiate with the sitter?
I don't know how to talk about trying to do that, but I just practically, I don't know how to do it.
So you're in good retirement job, supervisor.
This is the defendant that we collected over $5,000 on. He was on a payment plan with us, we're working with him, and he paid over $5,000 in fines. And in that first column, the 1,876, that's the amount that we get credit for collecting on, even though we collected the full over $5,000. Surcharge, we don't get any credit for. The miscellaneous fees, we don't get any credit for. But as you can see, we collected almost over $2,700 to jail room and board, which is also beneficial to the county, even though it doesn't reflect that that's an amount we're collecting, but that's jail room and board. So I just wanted you to be able to see what the amounts are. And this is a case that I'm going to show you that's restitution. This is the person that owes over $5,000 in fines. Most of it is restitution. We worked with probation for about two months to get this case taken away from the third-party debt collection agency. And once we did that, they removed over $1,500 in fees. So now, when the person makes their payments, the total amount that she's paying is going towards this victim restitution instead of a percentage going to the third-party debt collection fee. But of that over $6,000 amount that we're going to end up collecting when all is said and done, we're only going to get credit for $230 of it. But this victim is getting her restitution paid, getting reimbursed for the crime that was committed against her. So I just wanted you to see, you know, the dollars and the amounts we're collecting that's not being reflected. And in addition to all this collection, we're also providing a really helpful service. 98% of the people that are coming in now and getting on a payment plan with us are driving legally, can properly register their car, and we are so busy right now, we're not even going after people. We haven't filed a single contempt. We haven't garnished a single wage yet. We're just dealing with the people that are coming in, the traffic that we're dealing with on a regular basis. We haven't had time to go beyond that yet, but at some point, we are looking and hoping to do that. We are in a county with a population of over just 102,000 people. What that means is, we're in the population group of 100 to 150,000, which puts us initially, prior to July 1st of this year, in a $400,000 threshold amount. On July 1st, the law changed, and they upped our threshold amount to $600,000. And what that means is, we are required, in the fiscal year, to collect a total amount of at least $600,000 to be able to maintain our collection program. So, I mean, just by having a population of a little over 2,000 people over the 100,000, our threshold would have been 300,000. Now it's 600,000.
Do you mind if I interrupt you just so? I'll lose the question by the time we get to the end, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Where are we projected to be right now in total revenues? If we need to be at 600,000? Basically, my question is, are we on track to be able to?
We are. I think that third-page fiscal year 2017 that PJ had previously provided to you shows that we're at over 120-some thousand already in the first two months of this fiscal year. So we are on track to that threshold amount.
Thank you.
The percentage that we also collect and get now has changed. Before, the state would get 60% of everything we collected, and the county would get 40% until we hit threshold. Once we hit threshold, the state would then lose a percentage of theirs, and it would be 48%. The county would get 40%, and then the county attorney's office would get 12%. That has now changed. Now the state collects 72% of everything we collect. The county gets 28% until we hit threshold. Once we hit the $600,000 threshold, the state then collects 68% of what we bring in. The county still gets the 28%, and then the county attorney's office gets 5%. So the numbers have gone down as far as what we actually get for the amount of work that we do.
These numbers are going the wrong way.
They are, but there's a lot of little nuances in the change in the law that it... This, in the end, I think, is more beneficial to us because they've taken away that third-party debt collection that they, every case used to go to. Now we can get the case quicker, and we can get people on payment plans quicker. So they're trying to balance it out that way.
I'm sorry, how much does the county get? 22?
28.
28, thank you.
So we only have two months, obviously, to look at, so we're interested probably in any trends. Is it a pretty stable month-to-month, or do you notice overall trends?
We're so new at this still, and now, it continued to be pretty steady last year when we did it. It kind of went up every month. We hit a high in March. And usually, we find, I guess people have told us, February, March is when people get their tax returns back, they can pay more of their fines. So we hit some higher months in February, March last year, and then it kind of slowed down a little bit again in April, May, and June. But as you can see, July, we did okay, and then August, it went up from July. So it's gradually going up, is the trend we're seeing. I just can't, I have no way to predict how much or if it's going to continue.
There are other questions? I have a question for Dennis, if that's okay. Dennis came up with, and I think worked with PJ on this memo, correct?
Correct.
And so you have in here, just so I make sure that we all understand this, because I think the first thing that we wanted to make sure is it's taxpayer-neutral. In other words, it doesn't, you know, hiring a new position would not impede on taxpayers. So the $34,122, that's actually what's been received at whatever percentage
Correct.
they're using, and that's what's actually coming in.
Correct.
And then you projected over the rest of the 10 months for that fiscal year, this additional amount. Is that right?
Correct.
And so total revenues are projected at $204,736?
Correct.
And as far as the budget right now, the salaries are $137, and so there's about $67,000-some dollars that would be left over based on projections, right? Am I reading this correctly?
Yes.
And you're asking to hire for about $63,000. In other words, the amount of money that is projected to be left over, minus the salary, will still be positive.
There'll still be a positive effect to the county. That's given the numbers as they sit right now, but again, those numbers we're predicting are going to be greatly increased over the next few months because we're going to have the manpower to process the cases. What we're doing right now is a one-and-a-half man station doing at least a four-person job.
Mary's doing the bulk. I'm not doing very much fine collections anymore. I've shifted all my responsibilities over to asset forfeitures, which is what I was supposed to be doing. Mary's doing the bulk of the fine collections right now, so she's, it's, we just need some help. I mean, and at some point, I'm shifting away from it and just basically doing a supervisory role as far as making sure it's doing everything it's supposed to be doing. That's our goal, is to get me out of it, get the support staff doing it. Black Hawk County has a population of about 134,000 people, and they have five full-time collection people. They have the same threshold as we do, and they have a supervising attorney. So we really, we just need some help for a county as busy as we are.
And this position would be solely dedicated to that?
Correct.
So I actually asked Dennis to pull Black Hawk County, and here's why I think that this is a good idea. Right now, you're looking at like $3,800 to the plus, but they started off with one collector, and they had $2,500, and then $54,000. Threw up over $25 million with five collectors. So I think the idea that if we add to this, that it'll have an exponential effect, I think that bears out.
We believe it does, too, but it's hard.
Right, and I'm not, they didn't get there overnight. I mean, this was 20 years' time.
Right.
But I think that that shows the same kind of trend, so.
We're just pretty confident we will not cost the county taxpayers any new dollars. We're confident in saying that.
Other discussion, questions?
Well, I'm happy that you used the previous year to come up with the $3,800 because that's the baseline, and I think when we have a full-time person dedicated to that, well, that will be the baseline. There's no way it can go lower than that.
Correct.
I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much for all the work you're doing, and we'll keep in close touch, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Run while the getting's good.
Item 11, Secondary Roads or County Engineer, Mark Nara. This is to consider approval of project plans for Project DLB D-38 73-97 for bridge replacement on 120th Street between Emmett Avenue and Fayette Avenue, FHWA number 355132.
Mark Nara, Woodbury County Engineer. We're proposing this bridge for an October 18th local letting. This is local secondary roads funds funding this one. The bridge is already closed, which would allow the contractor to do some winter work and perhaps an early spring pour then.
Move it. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much, Mark.
Thank you.
Item 12, Police Services, Kenny Schmitz. This is a LEC optimization plan. This is an information item. This is also a follow-up from a previous information item in which I told the board, after some consideration, they would come back. And Kenny?
Again, this item would address some areas in the facility that we have been told could possibly improve by further looking into and possibly developing some plans and a plan going forward on areas that could be looked at that would optimize our space, maybe the way that we do some of the functions in our facility. And so what I've done is I've sent a list of items to CMBA and the Baker Group for review. I believe they went over those with Goldberg Group, but it lists several things that I would look for in an optimization plan that they could provide for us to give us a better idea of how that plan might meet our needs in the future and might allow us to project some costs for some projects, identify some low-hanging fruit and items like that. So I'll ask Brian with CMBA and Shane with the Baker Group to come up and go over some of those talking points for you.
Shane Albrecht with the Baker Group. So our basic goal when we do this, as you guys have in front of you, is we're going to build you a plan that has about 80% of the plans will be short in mid-range goals. That way, you know ahead of time kind of what that is. Brian, do you want to kind of talk about some of that?
Yeah, short-range goals, sir?
Sure. I know that we talked briefly a little bit at the last time, and I think we used the storage example, personal effects, which is one of them, definitely, but there's a few other ones that we've talked about with staff. Some of the pre-issues, compliance, line of sight, safety and security with that, which is window film on jail cells, that type of thing. So there's different levels of that, so we need to look at that potentially. There is some mechanical items from water control within the pods, how we deal with that from a maintenance and safety issue. And then even, we've had some discussion about day rooms and subdividing those day rooms a little bit for additional classification of inmates. The staff has some challenges with the space they have, and if there's some additional day room capability there with subdivisions, that allows for that classification change. So those are just a few short-term examples. Midterm or mid-range, there is definitely a lack of holding cells that are up there, and I'm not saying that we'll create space, but how do we efficiently use that space potentially a little bit better? So we'll look at the booking and intake process, how that flows specifically. Maybe there's some crossover with staff, with inmates. How do we address some of that movement within the facility? So that would be a part of it. Additionally to that would be looking at the medical side of the jail itself as well, and how do we improve that process? How do we make sure that the inmates have what they need on the medical side, plus the mental health side as well? We want to make sure that they're accommodated there as well, so. And then we would look at some long-range things, but we know that that's a, you know, 20% of the plan, basically, and those would be some items that we'd have to prioritize with some dollars associated with your input as well at the board level, so.
So some of the things with this are kind of challenging because we haven't actually got to do the long-range studies, so it's hard to give you exactly relative examples. But when we get done, you have a nice book together with examples. One of the things that we've talked about recently in some of the other meetings is the lack of a break room up there. So we will look at different spaces up there to see if we can find a spot to put a break room. Something that makes sense with the kitchen moving and everything changing. We don't have a set space to have a break room, so we will look at that. But one of the other things about this, we also will put together a budget to tell you what each of those estimate roughly cost, depending on what year you do it, and give you some budget numbers, which will allow the staff to budget and CIP to pick some of these things off so that you actually have a plan that you can move forward with and enter setting up for future years for budgets so we know these things are getting done, not just setting up a plan.
Questions and discussion? One of the things I appreciate in this is that you've identified, I think, the last time when we were looking at some of the examples, which we can appreciate that Goldberg's worked on, have been either reconstruction of entire facilities. As you know, we're taking on a rather large one, but very appreciative that many, many times in the LAC Expansion Committee, it was, well, would you look at the other 70% of the space? Well, this, to me, looks at some real needs, like the break room that controls HVAC equipment being undersized in some areas. Met with the union yesterday, and just as far as some conditions and, you know, we're doing building automation controls, but that's not going to fix if something's undersized to begin with. So I think looking at how to optimize the space at the amount of cost, I think it's going to be money that's well-spent, especially if we can increase and use some of that space on the expertise of Goldberg and working in other facilities, so. Those are the information items, so if there's other questions?
No, it's just an information item.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anything else from you, Kenny?
Oh, just all right.
Okay. Thank you very much. So I would expect that we'll see this back as an action item sometime in the future. And with that, we've dispensed with all action items. Item 13A is Suland District Health Anticipated Budget Amendment, CIP and Numbers Clarification. As you see, we have Kevin Green with us from Suland District Health, and just wanted to update the board. This would have been one of my committee reports, but we had a discussion on home care, home maker aid and services, and that currently, they're looking at about a $75,925 shortfall within the nursing division budget. This is something that Dennis and I had some clarification back and forth regarding the reserve numbers, which are healthy. And so bottom line is, there was initial discussion at Suland District Health about doing a budget amendment. Has not been done as of this point. Would not be an ask of the county board of supervisors, but would be looking at their own reserves in order to be able to take care of that. Kevin, is that a fairly accurate 30,000-foot aerial overview? And so just wanted to keep the board informed of that and see if there's any questions, especially as we have Kevin with us. Hearing none. I will move to item B, Energy Efficiency Goal Number Two. This is my idea. This board took action to, on a wholesale approach, take every single light within all over county buildings and make it more efficient. I'd like to signal my intention, and I'll put this on the agenda, but at some point, control the lighting that we have as well. control the lighting that we have as well. I was here at about 9:30 last night and after our Sloan meeting and notice there's a variety of equipment that's running, lighting that's on, and I realize we also have folks who are cleaning at the same time. But there are ways that through technologies, we can control lighting, things like daylight harvesting, where against windows, it can actually sense the amount of natural light and dim, let's say, the outer row of lights even to a lesser lumens level, or what are termed vacancy sensors now, which turn the lights off, but don't turn them back on when you walk into the room. They're not an occupancy sensor, so you have to actually...
You work in the dark.
No, you have to actually go and you have to affirmatively turn the light switch back on. There are a lot of savings, an enormous amount of energy reduction and then costs that can be saved by doing so. So one of the things that could be a potential is working with Building Services and the Baker Group and identifying with Mid-American. They usually use Clear Results, which is their engineering firm. The county actually did this with Nexant. It's probably been seven or eight years, those reports. Some Mid-American will not use those at this point. They have to have another engineering firm come in and walk the space, which they do for free, and they'd say, well, here's the technologies that you could use, here's the upfront cost that it will be to the county, and here's the incentives. Very similar to what was done with the LED project. By the way, we got $324,000 in today in checks and rebates, so that's a good thing. And Dennis, we have nine more to come in?
Nine more.
So just something that I wanted to let you know, it was on my small mind.
Awesome. Got it.
Okay. Any questions or thoughts there?
Obviously, it's a money saver. Are there additional rebates that are in this world that we know of or is that not an option?
I'm sure there are some rebates. We would have to, again, have Mid-American Energy's company, Clear Result, come and take a look and see how those might be applied. They have different rebate projects, if you will, and sometimes how they apply those or what they apply those to differ. So that's something that that company would have to help us determine.
That'd be good.
Here's one weird thing. Now that we have really efficient lighting, they're probably going to say that the payback takes that much longer, if that makes sense, because it's that much more efficient. You're not turning off inefficient lighting, but that's still a good thing. Item C, meetings with department heads on setting goals by... I wanted to see, our department heads came up with several goals and some of them really wrote quite a bit from back in March and April. And so I've encouraged them to reach out to each of their liaisons to meet with and just to update how things are going, how we can be supportive and just to have that dialogue and conversation. Was able to meet with three today and just wanted to see if the first week in October, is that a reasonable goal for folks to meet and have those conversations and kind of report back on how things are going? All right, and then that brings us to item 14, reports on committee meetings.
I have a couple. We had Grow Sulan last Wednesday. CF winding down, they've got about 2,900 workers. At the end of September, they hope to have around 2,500. End of October, around 1,000. No date to close Allison yet. The steam, there's steam coming from that plant, which is a clean-out process, so if you see billowing steam coming out from down there, it's not a fire, it's just steam. Mid-November, they think they might be up and running, although they didn't nail that down, could be later than that. The big event, I think, that will happen down there is when they do fire up, they have a stack that's 320 feet high and when they start, there's gases that come off the process that they have to burn off, so there will be 200 foot of fire above the 320-foot stack. And I believe there's a little noise with that. So they're going to do a public campaign to let people know things are okay out there. Good meeting. The other one this morning was the Program Committee. Project Compass is running about 40 folks a week. They have six to eight in recovery, which means they're moving along. Drug Court, Phil Woldy was not there. Veterans Court, they have about seven vets in Veterans Court. The IDAP program is up and running. Iowa Workforce Development is working with folks in the jail, hopefully. I believe Mr. Stallman made a connection today to get them in there to help write resumes so when they get out, they can get a job, which is a great thing, so. Put in another pitch for 24/7. That's all I got.
I attended a Hungry Canyons Alliance Board of Directors Quarterly Meeting last week in Oakland, along with Ben Kuzler from the Engineering Department. For lack of a better term, we had a hop-on, hop-off bus tour of grade control structures in Potawatomi County, just to show us what works and what doesn't as we try to stay the effects of erosion due to the river. I also suggested that our next quarterly meeting, that lawmakers be invited and be provided with before pictures of these parts of the stream or river where they could see how it's been improved with the work that Hungry Canyons has been doing and that they'd be provided that invitation. That's going to happen. I think that'll be very good because it's a, it's, the fear is that it's a waning program and that the state funding might not always be there. And on the note of funding, we did in Woodbury County have a wear control structure, I believe it's called, that came in over budget. And so with me standing over his shoulder, Ben Kuzler was successful in getting funding from the region for that expense. And so that's another piece of good news from that. Also recently had a Policy Review Committee Meeting. You'll have the minutes in your next week's agenda packet. The major issue, I think, is we put the finishing touches on the employee handbook that will be brought before the board in one or two weeks by Ed's office. I think it'll update a lot of issues and provide some delineation between policies and the handbook and make sure there's no contradictions. We've had excellent legal advice on that front. And we discussed some other recommendations from our Deputy Auditor, Gene Jessen, who is unfortunately going to be leaving us soon, and so we came across some policies we might want to review in the future that may not have been reviewed for 10-plus years, so. I think we're doing good work and that's what I got.
Interstate Justification Report Committee, and they continue to do their due diligence on the environmental studies and letting that be the first filter, so to speak. There's a discussion of next steps as far as the level of environmental studies that'll need to be had. I won't get into the weeds on the technicalities, but the next step we'll know in likely four to six weeks on the level of environmental study that'll be needed. And then there will be potential public dissemination and information to give a very high-level overview and keeping folks out there informed. Anything else for the good of the cause?
Are we the board concerned, sir?
We are to citizen concerns, if there are any concerned citizens. And now, we are to board concerns.
Did the region offer, or are they in the process of offering a mental health professional to work in the jail?
Yes, they are. I'm not clear about how much time that will be, but we are working on a contract, as far as I know.
Was for one day a week, three days a week, do you know?
What do you guys think?
Eric Solomon, Sheriff's Office. I actually believe it's a full-time jail alternative position. I'm not sure exactly what got approved, but I talked to Shane Walter this morning and we're going to get together probably in the next week. The learning curve for the job would be the Woodbury County Jail, so if you can handle the Woodbury County Jail, Plymouth and Sioux would be a drop in the, very easy for you. The sheriff and I and the 26 are going to Des Moines for a meeting about this and it's based off of Johnson County's model and they've had a tremendous amount of success, so. I'm not real sure though, like I said, what got approved?
Well, I mean, it wouldn't be approved yet if it hasn't gone to your meeting, one of your meetings.
We haven't seen a contract, so.
But at least you're having initial discussion.
Something was approved though, the last time.
Preliminary plans.
Is that, okay, yeah, see, I'm not sure. I'm not very good at that type of stuff, so.
This has been going on for months.
Yes. But Shane Walter, I did talk to him this morning and he said he was going to get with us and whatever we had to bring back to that board, mental health board, we were going to get done in the next week or so.
Sounds like a needed thing?
Very much needed. I think we'd see a tremendous amount of success with that position.
Thank you, sir.
All right, anything else for the good of the cause?
We're at an hour and five minutes.
Let's adjourn.